Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Present.
President Counsel Jacutis?
Present.
President Counsel Calucci?
Present.
President Counsel Field?
Present.
President Counsel Hogan?
Present.
President Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
President Counsel Lozzi absent. Counselor Net?
Present.
President Counsel Staben? Absent. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
President Counsel Seer?
Present. All rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, if we can remember the family of Dot McKeown and retired Lynn Police Sergeant Bob O'Neil.
Fledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Except the minutes from the January 28th meeting. Yes, sir. Motion made.
Second.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion made to suspend the rules. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna do something that we don't normally do at a council meeting. In fact, I don't ever remember us doing this. I'm gonna ask Henry to come up to the podium. I'm gonna embarrass him for a minute. So, all, come up here, right up here, not down there. With all the stuff going on in Lynn, all the development, all the restaurants that are opening, all the businesses, all the things that are happening. Lynn is really moving. It really is. I'm gonna ask Brian to come up here, too. And Henry opened up a restaurant, I believe it was three years ago, called District 45, which was an unbelievable restaurant. It just didn't fit the neighborhood. So, he retooled it, came up with another idea, and that kind of didn't fit the neighborhood either. So, he taking another swing at it. He's knocked down three times, and he got back up every time, brushed himself off. So, he's an inspiration to everybody, but he keeps investing back in our community. And I think that we should be investing in him. He opened up Skinny Hank's, which I know at least 100 people have been there in the last few weeks. And the food is just unbelievable. So, I just wanna show our appreciation as the council and citizens of Lynn by presenting him with this plaque tonight and thanking him for his continued support of the city, and I hope that we continually support his business. And I know the mayor has one farm, too.
Thank you, President Seer. And typically, we, I get a chance to go to a lot of openings. There's some really great things happening. A lot of great restaurants are opening across the city. It's pretty, very exciting. So, I'm happy to be here as well to recognize Henry and his new restaurant. So, it's, I'm presenting a citation from my office to Henry Parisot in recognition of the grand opening of Skinny Hank's BBQ Restaurant and your outstanding commitment to the dining scene in the city of Lynn. You're a great addition to the exciting things going on. Wanted to sign this February 11, 2020. Congratulations on your new opening and wish you good luck and success.
I just, I asked Brian to come up here for a reason. He likes to eat.
I'm a frequent pacer.
And he's always on Facebook telling everybody how great Skinny Hank's is. And it's not just barbecue. It's burgers, it's chicken, macaroni, beans. I'm telling you. And he's got about 35 different kinds of beers, which I like. So, I don't know if Henry wants to say anything. You don't have to if you don't want to, but if you want to, just...
Yeah, 45 Luer Street. I appreciate it. I just wanna say thanks to Darren, the mayor, and the city council. I appreciate everybody's support. It's been a heck of a run. I believe in Lynn, and that spot's gonna work. This one's gonna work, I promise. I appreciate it.
Okay, now we gotta get down to business. First on the agenda, communications is a reappointment of Janet Rowe to the position of city clerk. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes, Janet Rowe.
Yes. Counselor Jacutis?
Yes.
Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Counselor Field?
Yes, Janet Rowe.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Lapierre?
Janet Rowe.
Counselor Lozzi, absent. Counselor Net?
Yes.
Counselor Staben?
Yes, Janet Rowe.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes, Janet Rowe.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes, Janet Rowe.
Communications from Zona, the mayor.
Dear counselors, I hereby appoint Mrs. Judith King Weber, 52 Apple Blossom Lane, as my designee to serve on the Lynn Public Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Weber's term is effective immediately and will expire on April 1, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose the eyes of it. Public hearings.
We have a proposed ordinance amending the city of Lynn's own ordinance and the city of Lynn's own map in W-3 and W-4 districts.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, thank you. Madam Clerk, congratulations. My name is James Cowdell, lifelong resident of the city of Lynn, EDIC director. I do wanna thank the council. There's historic development going on, and each of you have played a role in that. When you look at the development that's going on, $100 million project on Monroe Street, $110 million construction project going on at the North Harbor, RCG, there was a ribbon cutting there for a $5 million project on Lower Monroe Street, the Gateway Project just completed, $30 million project, the YMCA, $30 million project, KIP just invested $30 million on Wheeler Street. And then, not to show our cards, but the council is working very closely. This will be an exciting year for new projects. We'll kind of leave it at that. But truly, the development that's going on is historic. And tonight, what's before you is the final piece of the zoning along the waterfront. And it's a culmination of about a year's worth of planning, public meetings. And many of the city councils attended all of those meetings. I think we had nine or 10 public meetings. And the council has voted on the Minnesota Harbor Plan. They have voted and supported the open space plan. And now, tonight is the final piece, which is the Gorilac Farm area for waterfront zone 3. UTIL has recommended, UTIL is the consultant that we hired on behalf of the city with their team of urban planners. They have recommended the zoning changes that is before this board, and EDIC strongly supports that. When this is passed, and hopefully it is passed, it lines up so that A.W. Perry can purchase the site. A.W. Perry is a company that has been around for 100 years. They have a long track record. They do not buy property and flip it. They buy it, they invest in the city, and we're really supporting them, and we strongly endorse this, and we hope that you support these zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you. My name is James Moore. I'm an attorney at law. I practice in Lynn, Massachusetts, and have lived here all my life also, just like Mr. Cowdell. In December 2018, I was contacted by A.W. Perry expressing their interest in the purchase of the Gorilac Farm property on the Linway. They wanted to know what was the zoning status and what were the zoning issues, if any, on the property. They explained their goal on the property was to purchase, and as the conditions changed, developed the property for uses developed consistent with high-end residential and commercial development. After reviewing the city of Lynn's zoning ordinance, I came to conclusion that the status of the property is that of a non-conforming use. This restricted the property to a dairy manufacturing plant, and further, that use would expire after the dairy manufacturer was discontinued for a period of one year. I set up a meeting with Mr. Mike Donovan, the chief of inspectional services, and he confirmed this conclusion. He also pointed out to me that the individual things that Gorilac Farm used the property for, such as office space, light manufacturing, truck repair, warehousing, would only be allowed if the entire property was used as a dairy manufacturing plant. A.W. Perry needed to put the property to use as it existed to generate income until such is time the development caught up with the location. And the client could develop the property consistent with the visions of the city of Lynn and theirs. We approached the mayor and the council president Seer and explained the problem. We suggested a possible solution, which was a zoning amendment that allows the property to be used that it is now used, but without the requirement that it be run as a dairy manufacturing plant. We were encouraged to draft such an ordinance for the city to review. In April of 2019, we submitted a draft ordinance to the city and requested a meeting to review, add and subtract from the draft city ordinance with the goal of allowing A.W. Perry to purchase and carry the property until they could develop, consistent again with the visions of the city and of A.W. Perry. After hearing back from city officials and the city consultants for the master harbor plan, we came up with a second draft ordinance. This second ordinance, one excluded the Cowwash property from the zoning change as suggested by the UTIL Corporation, eliminated 12 of the proposed uses in the first draft, further defining two of the proposed uses to address the city's concern that those two uses would be allowed to multiply as of right in the existing WF3 area of the Linway. The second draft ordinance, slightly modified by the city, and is what now is in front of you, allows the property to be used as it is used now without the necessity of dairy manufacturing plant, the creation of new jobs in the vacant facility, and protection of the city's tax revenue, all until such time as A.W. Perry can develop. I have representatives from A.W. Perry here tonight who will speak about A.W. Perry and their vision for this property, and I will answer any questions you might have on the zoning issues themselves now or at any time during the hearing as it proceeds. I would ask that the council pass the ordinance with which the planning board recommended that Part 8 and Part 9 be stricken from the audience. Thank you very much. From the audience, not from the audience. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Rick, you have a question?
I can wait till comments are done.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counselor Hogan?
Yes, I met with our representatives from A.W. Perry, and I also made sure I went down and checked out the site. I also work right next to the site, and I live in Ward 6. I'm also the Ward 6 counselor. And I think A.W. Perry would be very good for this site, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Counsel Staben?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since this was first discussed, going back to last year, we had a few meetings, and I expressed my reservations with some of these changes. While, you know, I agree that this site will probably not be suitable for, you know, a housing development or anything in my lifetime, because as was quoted early on, nothing along those lines could be developed until the smells go away. And I think we can all agree that with the sewer plant right there, with the Covanta transfer station right there, I don't think either one of them are going away anytime soon or the smells that go along with them. And so, I think that this property would be a good buffer property between kind of that stinky industrial stuff on one side and the residential mixed-use stuff that would go on the South Harbor site. But I am concerned with some of the uses that we would have to plug in by right versus a special permit. Again, I'm not opposed to switching from a waterfront 1 to a waterfront 3, but when we look at, you know, what we need to plug in there to allow by right, which would impact the whole waterfront 3 zone, which is basically Blossom Street down to the Cowwash, you know, boat construction, maintenance, and repair, commercial fishing, fish processing, fish market, fitness center if part of a hotel, hotels, which I don't think anybody would be opposed to, research and development, which I don't think anybody would be opposed to. And some of this stuff is already in here by special permit, but we're applying these things by right. Light manufacturing, which is currently a special permit in a waterfront 3, we would be giving by right. An ICE establishment. So, my question is, in truck repair. Now, I've heard a few different versions of truck repair for this site using the Gorilac Farms garage for truck repair. And I can, in, you know, A.W. Perry, I've looked them up. They're an impressive company, and I think that they'd be great to have here in the city of Lynn. And I understand their need to recoup some of their investment as they move along to a final development there. But, you know, I heard the truck repair was gonna be general truck repair. Then I heard it was gonna, you know, possibly be truck repair only for tenants that are in, you know, renting warehouse space or whatever. I heard a boat manufacturer, boat repair. And then, at the chamber meeting, economic development meeting last week, I had heard oil trucks and oil truck storage, but not the storage of oil. So, myself, I would feel more comfortable if we had the ability to issue special permits and be able to see each individual use. You know, some people may say, yeah, it'd be cool to see a boat manufacturer move in there and, you know, and the jobs that go along with that, especially, you know, in the marine area and in the waterfront area of the city. But, you know, maybe some folks may not be comfortable with the repair and storage of oil trucks on that site, especially being a waterfront site. So, you know, those are my reservations, that the uses that we are allowing by right, you know, warehousing, 35,000 square foot of warehouse space. I forget the square footage, but it was more than that of cold storage space. So, when we, you know, they go to attract companies to move into that. When you think about, you own a company and you're looking for warehouse space and move your operation there. And I think what we heard on Tuesday was a three-to-a-five-year window when things might change down there. Now, you move a company that's gonna take up 35,000 square feet of space with all your employees and everything else and risk being kicked to the curb in five years? I personally don't see that happening. And the same thing if you were to locate a company, you know, if you were a fish processor and you were gonna use the cold storage part of that building and move your entire operation there. You know, those of us sitting at this table know how quickly two years goes, right? So, you know, times that by two, and you could be potentially out of business in five years. And, you know, as a business person myself, who's been in five-year leases and all, and now who gives five-year leases, I honestly, I don't see that happening. So, one, I'm uncomfortable with the, with the allowing all these uses by right versus coming before the council for a special permit so that we can identify exactly what those uses would be and what would be going on instead of just generally giving a by-right usage. And I'd like to ask the question, and again, these are uses that will be plugged in in the complete waterfront 3 zone. So, before I was on this council, when you're going through the zoning, there was a reason that this body felt it was necessary to exclude these uses in a waterfront 3 zone. And now, we're gonna change the whole waterfront 3 zone to allow it by right. And so, I guess I'd like to ask the question of Attorney Moore, representative of A.W. Perry. And again, I think five years is an awful short time, but could you make assurances that none of these uses would be in play, say, 10 years from today?
Could I predict that future? I don't believe I could. The future being notoriously difficult to predict, I'm not sure I could predict what would be exactly there in 10 years. But I can predict what will be there if we don't make this change, and that's what's there now. And that's not an acceptable thing for the city to have that property sitting there vacant. The concept of these uses was supported by the city's waterfront consultant, who thought that these properties in the waterfront 3 zone were going to be generators of jobs for people who could live on the Linway. And the jobs are important. Not all places that have jobs look as good as places that don't have jobs. But for now, we wanna try to rent it up, put people to work, and get ready for our larger development. But we will have to wait for that development to catch up to that end of the Linway. I think it's coming from the Sargus River towards us and from the Beacon Site towards us. But we're not gonna be able to get right in the middle of it with that type of development. It's gonna come our way, hopefully within five to seven years.
But the folks that are living at the North and South Harbor sites are not gonna be the folks that are working in a warehouse?
I don't know that, because people own warehouses. Warehouses don't generate a lot of jobs. Light manufacturing, a good manufacturing can generate jobs. So, there's a boom in that type of business, which we're hoping to take advantage of while we wait for the development.
And your clients not comfortable with putting the individual uses in the hands of the council to approve?
Well, every single tenant would be a burden. And that's not really something someone would invest in, hoping that they would get permission to rent.
Well, just like, you know, before you buy a property, you make a contingent upon certain permits being issued. I would assume that.
Well, you gotta buy this property the way it is, especially with the bankruptcy now pending for Dean Food. They affirmed our sale, so that the sale has been approved now by the bankruptcy court in Texas, and we can go ahead with it. What happens if our transaction falls through, I do not know. Again, that's a piece of the future that I wouldn't be able to predict. And I have no idea, of course, what the Texas bankruptcy court thinks that they will do with the property.
I would assume they'd wanna liquidate it, I mean, personally speaking.
Yes.
And this is only my opinion. You know, they made the decision to pull out of here. I couldn't care less if Dean Foods got 11 million or 11 cents, to be honest with you.
I don't have any problem with that, but Dean Foods is not gonna be in charge of that bankruptcy. The bankruptcy trustee is gonna be in charge of that bankruptcy. So, and they're not looking to necessarily get the best user for the property. They're looking to get some money and move on with the creditors. A little different interest than we have from A.W. Perry.
I'm just, personally, I'm uncomfortable with all these by-right uses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other discussion? Counsel Calucci?
Jim Cowdell, his point of view on this?
My point of view on what we're just talking about. Okay. Well, I would say a few things. Number one, when I met with Bob from A.W. Perry before he signed the PNS, he said, what is the city's vision? Before we invest in Lynn, what's the city's vision? Because he's not buying it, or A.W. Perry is not buying it for a dairy production plant. So, we were able to lay out and articulate the plan that the city council and the vision that the city council has, and that's why they went forward to buy this property. They are not buying this property to keep it as a Gorilac Farms. Short-term, yes. Long-term, that is not why. So, the counselor from Ward 2 raises, his concerns really get to the crux, which is, what will this property be long-term? Whether that's 10 years, or five years, or three years? We don't know just exactly yet. But I can assure you that A.W. Perry is legit. They have deep pockets. They have been around for over 100 years. And they are not buying this property to have it look like Gorilac Farms long-term. So, that would be my opinion on this.
Anyone else have any questions? Before we vote, we have a correspondence from the planning board.
The Lynn Planning Board has unanimously voted to recommend the passage of the WF3, WF4 zone amendments as advertised with the following condition. Part 8 and Part 9 of the proposed ordinance be stricken in their entirety.
Mr. President? Counsel Lapierre? Just for my edification, this is special permit, requires eight votes. Could I have Attorney Lamanna come up? Just so I'm clear on this, like speculating into the future, but this special permit is for this outfit only. They would have to come back to us down the road.
This is an amendment to the zone ordinance that would apply to the whole WF3, not just A.W. Perry. So, this would run, as stated earlier, Blossom Street down to the liquor store.
Well, it's not just that parcel. It's that whole stretch.
No, no. But from a realistic standpoint, truck repair and warehousing, there's very few buildings that would fall into that, and that was done deliberately as a use that, if it is gonna be permitted, it wouldn't necessarily be warranted up and down that location. As his own change, it needs eight votes tonight. A special permit application, if by state law, is another that requires eight votes per special permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
I don't know if Mr. Cowdell can answer this question. I can, Mr. Chair. How many particular?
I did close, so I will give you the opportunity.
How many particular properties does this affect in the R3, R4? Thank you.
How many particular properties in the waterfront zone 3? So, we're kind of lucky as far as landowners. There's not a lot of them. And you can start to name them off the top of your head. But Gorilac Farms, when you're looking at waterfront 3, and I'm guessing 75, 80% of waterfront, of what we're talking about, is really those, that large portion is Gorilac Farms. But I'm guessing on the percentage, but that would be my answer.
There was a follow-up to Counsel Lapierre's question. Thank you.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Jacutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi absent. Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staben?
If I'm wrong, but no.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
We have the Petition of Neighborhood Development Association for construction of four residential buildings in a business district at River and Burn Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Peggy Phelps. I'm representing Neighborhood Development Associates along with my colleague Ted Smith. A few years ago, Neighborhood Development Associates purchased three lots from the General Electric Company. Since that time, we have developed two lots, and we are now on the third lot, which is now located in a business district. We would like to construct four buildings containing 12 units. Two of the buildings will have four units each. One building will have three units, and then there's a single-family home. These are all homeownership units, and they'll be sold to first-time home buyers. 25% of the units will be deed-restricted for low-to-moderate-income buyers. And I passed out packages to each one of you showing the renderings from the perspective of River Street and the perspective of Burn Street along with the site plan and the plot plan to show you the location of the properties on the site. Our first two developments were very successful. We built four single families on each lot, and all eight homes have been sold. We've also been instrumental, along with the Ward Counselor Hogan, in transforming that neighborhood by providing loans and grants to existing homeowners to improve their properties. And I believe the whole area with the three large development projects going on have really made a huge transformation in that area. So, we respectfully ask the council to vote our request to build residential units in a business district. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. It's the wish of the council. Counsel failed.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Jacutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi Appson? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. We have the petition of Eugene Dean of Fiesta Shows to hold a carnival on April 23 through April 26 in the English High School parking lot to benefit the City of Lynn 4th of July fireworks. Date now is to be Thursday and Friday, 5 to 11 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 1 p.m. to 11 p.m. Setup will be on April 20, 2020.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Counsel Staubid?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve on the condition that there are no conflicts that exist with any potential uses of that property by Lynn English High School, because there are talks of possibly putting portable units out there. So my motion is contingent upon there being no conflicts with the Lynn School Department and placement of the portable units.
Seconded. Motion approved with a stipulation. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi Appson? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. We have the petition of Barlow Signs for a sign permit at Lynn Marketplace, 43 State Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Brandon Courier. I'm a senior project manager at Barlow Signs. We are here seeking approval for a special permit of a wall sign that we're proposing over at Lynn Marketplace. I have some copies here to pass on. I apologize, I don't have enough copies for everybody. But we're seeking approval for this sign, as it's going to, this property is set back, especially from the Market and Andrews side. This is the location of the sign, it's going to be on the side of the building there. This is going to help identify the tenants that are in that mall from that side. It's going to help them, and it's going to help the community.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? What's the wish of the council? Counsel Chakoudis?
Speaking to the sign company, I think it's good for the area, at least we're going to know what's inside that plaza, so motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi Appson? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
We have the petition of Johannes Noda, owner of Black Stallion Tattoos, to open a shop at 271 Western Ave from Tuesday through Saturday by appointment only.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Can't walk that fast. Thank you. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say, but yeah, I'm looking to open a tattoo studio. It's mainly going to be a private tattoo studio, but still with an open-door policy. Walk-ins are obviously very important to maintain a new clientele, to get like appointments made, and to keep the business running. It's going to be at the Lydia Pinkham Building, so it's like a little off-street. It's a very artistic-like community. We're like focusing mainly on like larger-scale tattoos clients. That open-door policy is important to just like maintain like a new clientele, that people can come in, talk to me in person about their projects, rather than doing everything over email. When I talked to Wayne Lozzi, he had the only thing, restriction that we close at like 8 p.m., and that's like more than fine.
Got it. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name's Anastasia Kutsoglu. I'm partnered with Johannes Noda, and I just wanted to speak a little bit on his behalf in terms of himself as a person and artist. He's been tattooing for 20 years almost. He's trained in Europe under some of the greats in our field. He has an obsession with cleanliness as well as artistry. So the, he will meet or exceed whatever the health requirements are in terms of the health board. He's been working in Boston for the last almost 10 years. He is a permanent resident of the U.S. who came to Boston because of me, and he's really given back a lot to his community in the time that he's been here, and we've been really happy to put roots in Lynn. So he is not only very good at what he does, but he's very interested in giving more to the community and making this a place that we can be active in and give back to as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Please step to the podium, Jeff, and please be brief.
You know what, it's too much of a sensitive issue, but I do know for a fact, I was told by a police officer in a different town, that there are rifles present over by the Lydia Pinkham Building about six months ago, and I don't approve of the tattoos. I've never met a girl that hasn't told me, except for her, just now.
So you're talking hearsay? Is that what you're doing, Jeff?
No, no. I've had girls tell me directly that they've been under force and hurt badly by tattoos, okay? And I do not approve of them myself, but I'm also telling you, it is not hearsay. I was told, honest to God, by a police department, and I read it somewhere, that there is artillery present at Lydia Pinkham Building, okay? And I know girls that have told me, under deadly force, they were tattooed, including police officers, guys and girls. So based on that, anybody that would want to vote, I'm not making fun of anybody, okay? That would want to vote to, you know, beat up guys and girls and force them into tattoos, maybe once in a while. I doubt it, but I don't know. There may be one that thinks it's a good idea, but I've heard way too many, almost everyone I've ever spoken to say, "I would want one. I don't know why, but they won't get their hands off me. I've been under deadly force from," and not me myself, except once I got chased down the street, and I got away by asking, telling him I would call the sheriff's department. So-
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? So wish to the council? Counsel Walsh?
We would like to make a motion to approve with the stipulation that there's no appointments after 8 p.m.
Motion made with stipulation that no appointments after 8. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
I'm sorry.
Just according, I just want to make sure the Ward One counselor is aware that it does say by appointment only, but the owner did say-
By appointment only?
That he would welcome walk-ins. I want to make sure that the Ward One counselor is aware of that with those stipulations. So.
I didn't hear the last part of that.
I don't know if the Ward, I just want to make sure the Ward One counselor is aware that he agreed, that what was discussed tonight by the owner, that he said he would welcome walk-ins, because it says here, "By appointment only." I don't know if that was a discussion that he had with Counsel Lozzi.
I think what was voted on tonight is what's on the agenda, which means by appointment only, and no appointments after 8 p.m.
So the stipulation is by appointments only, no appointments after 8 p.m. Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi Appson? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
We have the petition of George Benitez, owner of JB's Barber Shop Studio, for a coin-operated device license for one pool table at 337 Union Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Oop, hold on. I want to welcome Calvin back. He's been sick, so welcome back, Calvin.
Thank you, Council President. So Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street in Lynn. And barber shops, they do more than just cut hair, they're social centers now. And I'm a patron of JB's, in fact, I was in there today. And pool tables in barber shops aren't there just for people hanging out, they're there to kill some time while you're having a little wait, what, two or three patrons are ahead of you. And the exacting haircuts that they give there, full grooming, sometimes take up to a half an hour each. So instead of go out, walk in the street, you play a couple games of pool. So I hardly endorse this. The thing's been in there, and I think they just finally realized that they had to get a permit, so hopefully the council votes to allow this. Also, if you're looking for a haircut, I'm pretty picky. And this is among the cleanest, most curb-friendly-looking places, right next to Domino Pizza's at the curve of Union Street Hating Art and Cultural District in Central Square. And you go in there, you can eat off the floor, it's shiny, mirrors are clean, instruments are clean, and I'm pretty picky. So anyway, I have an endorsement for JB Barbers to put in their, keep their barber, their pool table.
Thank you, Calvin. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing? My name is Giancarlo Guzman. I work at JB's, number two.
My name is Giancarlo Guzman, and I work at JB's, number two. He's a barber there, barber shop there.
Thank you. Passes. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing?
My name is Giancarlo Guzman. I work at JB's, number two.
My name is Giancarlo Guzman, and I work at JB's, number two. He's a barber there, barber shop there.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Francis Martinez. I am the president and founder of the North Shore Latino Business Association, JB's One and Two, members, active members of the association. We're here to support them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Counsel Chakoudis?
They've been open for over a year now. I've dealt with Francis getting them ready down there on 98 Union Street, which is in Ward Five. The other one is in Ward Two. We've had no complaints over there. A lot of people in the area use that barber shop, so motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi Appson? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
We have petition of George Benitez, owner of JB's Barber Shop Studio, for a coin-operated device license for one pool table at 98 Union Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? It's the same gentleman who was just up. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Counsel Calucci?
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi Appson?[1518.03] Petition of Ralph Severnor for a laundromat at 391 Linway with a request to be open seven days, 24 hours.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, and through you to the members of the council, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. I'm here with Ralph Severnor, who I think many members of the council know. I was here in the past for similar result, asking for permission for a laundromat at 391 Linway. For those who don't have institutional memory other than perhaps Counsel Calucci, Ralph owned Capital Flows at the top of Union Street. It's now a mini mall that he developed and services the people in that neighborhood. And then when Notini, if you recall, left the Linway and closed, Ralph bought that land, put a price right there that serves the community at large, T-Mobile and a variety of other consumer-friendly operations. I was here, I think, at the end of 2016 and beginning of 2017 when we had the largest laundromat company in the Northeast, a company called Laundromax. And the council gave permission at that time for a similar proposal to operate a laundromat 24/7 at the site on the Linway. The difference is this. Laundromax is a national concern. Laundromax operates franchises, there's one in Bell Circle. But you sort of cede control to the people who operate this national company. It wasn't a marriage that worked with Ralph. Ralph's in the laundromat business. It sits up in Worcester. I visited it along with others. And he determined that it would be better if he owned and operated in his mall on the Linway a similar operation to that which he runs in Worcester. The one in Worcester has received many accolades. It services the athletic teams, the colleges of which there are many in Worcester, the semi-pro hockey team that's there. He's hoping to get the Woo Sox in terms of, and if anybody is familiar, as Counsel Hogan is, with athletic uniforms, you need to turn over the product quickly. The teams do that. And more importantly, when I talk with Counsel Hogan about this, Ralph did something that no one else that I have encountered in the laundromat business did. He proposed this to do, and I've discussed this with members of the council. One night a month, he takes the laundromat and gives access to those who are homeless to use it for a period of time. And I've had the opportunity to work with the Lynn Shelter Association. I've had the opportunity to work with local churches. I suggested to some of the counselors that we do the same thing here in Lynn that they're doing successfully in Worcester and operate this laundromat just not only for the benefit of the people, many of whom are going to be moving to the Linway, but for those who might be unable to, and otherwise avail themselves of that service. So I think we got a marriage here that will work between the government, who's assisted Ralph in the past in developing the parcels I've described, and Ralph, who I think is a known commodity in terms of the way he operates the properties that he owns. And he's got a demonstrated track record at a similar operation in the city of Worcester. And I hope that the council will look favorably on the request. I'd be glad to answer questions of any member.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Hogan.
Yes, I'm very familiar with the site. Again, over by the Price Right site. It's presently empty. And I did meet with Mr. Severnor and go over the proposal. And I just think it'll be good for that area. Especially down the street, we have Marion Gardens. We have a lot of other areas that could use access to a laundromat in that area. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi absent. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stabed?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear?
Yes. Next public hearing.
We have the petition of Estefani Oriana Garcia, owner of Estefani's Restaurant, for an all-alcohol license as a common vicula at 106 Union Street. Hours are Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and alcohol served from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Estefani Oriana Garcia, and I'm here in favor of Estefani's Restaurant, 106 Union Street. I'm looking for a full liquor license at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Fidelina Garcia, and I am the owner of 106 Union Street, Estefani's Restaurant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Frances Martinez. I'm the president and founder of the North Shore Latino Business Association. Just last week, we had the official grand opening of Estefani's, and we are here to support them for the full liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name's Miss Hagen Oriana. I'm Estefani's dad, and I'm the owner of 106 Union Two.
Gracias. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Calucci.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi absent. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stabed?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear?
Yes. Next public hearing.
We have the petition of Kelly Realjo, president of WMI Lynn LLC, to construct a multifamily high-rise with less than five stories in pot on Riley Way. Phase one will be 336 mixed units, 46 studios, 176 one-bedrooms, and 114 two-bedroom units.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, through you to the members of the council. I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner that is the owner of what most people commonly know as the South Harbor Site. We're here for really a specific, limited reason, which is a long process, which the council participated in, in modifying the waterfront master plan and the harbor plan. And it really began when you successfully moved the overhead utility lines, have put in play not only this parcel but other parcels along the Linway. The reason we're here is most recently in November and December, there were changes made to the zone ordinance. You continued that process this evening in making further changes in the waterfront district. The result of those changes put us at a conflict between the state's requirements and the city of Lynn's requirements as to height of a building. And we want to satisfy both. And in fact, there are people who think we do satisfy both, but we be from the safe and not sorry school. So we decided to ask and bring to your attention what this slight conflict is and ask you to give us permission to resolve it in a way that we think is satisfactory. I brought Jordan with me. I couldn't afford Teddy Smith to hold my boards, but... And actually, I need these boards for me more than for you since when I was a... I never made it to Eagle Scout, and I could never do compass readings. And when I was in the military, that was long before they had global positioning satellites. I just followed the people who were in charge who were smarter than I were. And that's how I got to where I wanted to go. So these perspective drawings show it from the west and the north. And if I could get Jordan to hold one of them up, or maybe both at the same time, it shows how the buildings of what we call staggered are stacked. And the issue is this. From DCR's point of view, that's the Department of Conservation from the state, when you're within 100 feet of the mean-high watermark in a designated port area, which this is, it's in a tideland overlay, you cannot have a building exceed three stories. And the reason for that was concerns environmentally that a building taller or higher could cast shadows, could adversely affect sea life and the environment. And so the state has a requirement that you be at 55 feet, no more, when you're within 100 feet. The city of Lynn adopted that in a footnote. I think it's footnote 15, when you did the zoning changes a month or two ago. But in that same zoning change, there's a footnote eight that says a building in this district has got to be 60 feet high. These buildings that we showed you on the renderings, in fact, on average, seven stories. They're called multifamily high-rise. And there's one other building proposed that will be on the Linway, which is in the second phase. Ultimately, you're looking at a potential $210 million investment to develop over 800 apartments that would be accessed from the Linway, from Riley Way. Easier said than done. Because to access along Riley Way, we have to deal with the utilities, about easement rights. We have to deal with the DCR. And this has been a long process with the cooperation of the EDIC and the other officials in the city of Lynn, Counsel Hogan, to try to achieve all of these things and steps. But this is a small step, this one issue. But when you're dealing with lenders and you're dealing with this kind of financing and these kinds of proposals, there's no margin for error. So the safest course was to bring this to your attention and to point out our buildings are, on average, more than seven stories. That in fact, we don't violate the state requirement when we're within 100 feet because it were at three stories. And the good news is that in this communication and dealing with state officials and city officials, some positive developments occurred. Notwithstanding that the bulkhead and the seawall and the erosion has taken Lynn from this parcel over the years. The developers agreed with the DCR and with the other officials in the city to maintain the promenade that would let people walk the length of the coastline and down to the Heritage Park and to maintain a buffer that's shown on that staggered line of where there would not be any activity we call waterfront district use zone. So not only are we going to grant the 75-foot promenade, we're going to retain an area 100 feet out. We're going to build these buildings in phases one and two. Phase one, what we showed you with respect to these two buildings, the only thing we're asking for approval, all the other buildings, all the other requirements are satisfied by right because it's what's called multifamily high-rise. But there is this conflict between what the zone ordinance says in one footnote, what it says in another, and what the state requirement is. The people who drafted those changes understood we had to satisfy the state's interest in protecting within 100 feet of the coastal line. We do that. And the city had its own intention when it enacted in the other footnote that you have a minimum of 60 feet or five stories. We satisfy that. And at the time, when we saw that and we pointed it out, people said that our remedy would be to bring this to your attention and ask for your permission to have a building like this. You're going to see other buildings like this at other sites along the Linway because that mean-high watermark and that designated port area and the tideland overlay not only affects this site but others. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to just allow us to build a building that sort of steps up, as they say, that within 100 feet is at three stories and then goes up to seven stories. And on average, is greater than five stories, which is what the zone ordinance requires. And that's how it's achieved with a design in this manner. And what we want to be able to do to secure that financing, to continue the development of the property, to bring needed market-rate housing and apartments to the city of Lynn, add to the revenue that tax base generated along the Linway, and bring, essentially create a new neighborhood in the city of Lynn. To start that process with formal approvals, we need to get your approval for this concept of staggering the buildings and stepping it up. And that's why we're here this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. The questions will be after the hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you. My name's Jonathan Feinberg. I'm a resident in Ward Three. I live right across from the Marshall Middle School. I'm here today to speak in opposition, as I have before, to any project coming into the Linway or coming into our city that does not directly and adequately account for our families' incomes and for our workers in this city. We've seen too many, in my opinion, too many buildings approved already, considering how close we are to our 10% minimum requirement under chapter 40B. So much so, and we all know this, and especially the council and the mayor know this because we're conducting a housing production plan right now to determine what the real housing needs are for our city. So considering that this housing crisis we're in impacts all of us, I would just like to request that the council put a hold on approving any new development of market rate, any new significant development of only market-rate units until the conclusion of the housing production plan and the recommendations therein are released. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I want to support his remarks. My name is Samantha. I live in Ward Four. And in addition to the income levels, it's important to incorporate housing for people with disabilities. And this needs to be included in the planning. And I feel that you need to have people with disabilities more involved in our city government. Our Disability Commission did not meet this evening. There was no notice of whether it was meeting. And the notice that was given for the meeting said that it was happening last week on the website. What I'm saying is we need more participation and housing for people with disabilities in the city of Lynn. Thank you. That should be included into the plans that are being proposed for all these sites along the Linway. It's very important.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Not yet, Jeff.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Isaac Simon Hoedz. I live in Ward Seven here in Lynn. I just want to speak in support of the comments that Jonathan just made. I think when a developer's coming to Lynn, they have essentially one question. Can they do a project that's profitable? And that's their role. That's the way private housing works. That's fine. I hope and I believe that all of you have some additional questions because I know all of you in some level. You're from Lynn, you know this city. And I think those questions need to be beyond the developer's profit and beyond any tax revenue a project might bring to the city. Does it do anything, even a little bit, to address the desperate need that your constituents have for housing that's affordable to working-class people, to low and moderate-income people at a whole range of incomes? And, you know, if this project doesn't do that, if this project's answer to how much of the... How many of the units are reserved for people at, say, 50% or 60% AMI, which would make it affordable to people in Lynn? If the answer to that is zero, then maybe it's time to table this kind of approval and take a harder look at whether this project could be modified so that it meets the needs of the developer, but it also does something for the people of this city. Over half of renters in Lynn are burdened by unaffordable rent. So that's very low-income people, up to middle, moderate-income people, are really hurting. I think the other question beyond whether this project or any project does something about that crisis we have for working people in this city is what's the impact in terms of segregation, right? The developer just mentioned this is going to essentially create a new neighborhood. Is that new neighborhood in keeping with, I think, the best of traditions of Lynn, which is to have more integration, to have more people coming together from different backgrounds? Or is this going to create a sort of enclave that's segregated primarily by economic status and, you know, realistically also by race? and, you know, realistically also by race? So I'd propose that, you know, it would make sense to table this for now with respect to take a look and see if some kind of compromise can be reached that would meet the needs of everyone in the city along with the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Again, I just want to reiterate those two points that those gentlemen made, but I also just want to kind of put this bug in your ear. During the day, I work for Congressman Moulton, and so I have sort of a bird's-eye view of our congressional district. All the towns and cities around us, Hamilton, Wen, Beverly, we all can agree that they're probably not doing their fair share. And the reason why is because they have more money than us, they're more organized than us, and they have laws and policies in place specifically to keep people who mostly live in Lynn out of that market. So for us, our priority in Lynn should be protecting the people who live here. Now, if you guys want to put a whole bunch of wealthy people on the waterfront, I'm not going to fight you on that, because Global Women will have something to say about that. But I will to put this, again, just make this very clear: if a development is coming into the city, can we please get some sort of benefit for the community? Whether it's $10,000 for what they call the Family Self-Sufficiency Fund, you've got a ton of people who need some financial literacy, we could do that. Whether it's putting some money aside for ESL classes, the lines are through the roof. I just want to make sure that we do that, that we put the people of Lynn first. I understand you're in a tough situation. I understand you need money, but there's nowhere else to build. Lynn is a gem, and we should start treating it like it, and start demanding more for ourselves in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We know you're opposed to it, Jeff. If you want to say something, you've got to come to the podium. Please.
Part of what I moved to Lynn for was the diversity. I grew up in Baltimore, and Lynn is the most diverse place I've been since then. It's a real benefit to the city. It is something not offered by the surrounding cities. We need the people who are economically diverse. Frankly, they do a lot of the work that makes the city run. We can't be pricing them out because they don't have very many places to go. Boston and the surrounds are rapidly gentrifying and upscaling, again, in another cycle. The economic downturn, I can undercut it, but blah, blah, blah. Lynn offers a refuge. It's not a ghetto. It offers an economically diverse, vertically-integrated community with something for everybody. If we make it all rich white folks, we'll lose so much. And you'll probably lose me, because that's part of what I love about Lynn, is its colorful aspects. But we need these people. I think every development should be making room for them.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. President, just to remind you that they should state their name and address.
Yes. Jeffrey Ericiau, 500 F Sixth Street, at Sykes, apartment number 16 in Lynn, Massachusetts. So just, I didn't fully hear what Attorney Vitale said, but very respectfully, I know that anytime he's done a project, that sometimes he states part of it, and if we rush for a decision, that's why I'm up here on this side of the podium instead of before, to take our time with him, because he's done a lot of beautiful work in this city, and he's been around the block a lot longer. So that's the only thing, is sometimes, in my opinion, I hear people believe they're voting for something, and they're rushing it. So it's not really an opposition. It's an opposition to voting too quickly without taking their time listening to what he's talking about, and it may be a course of events that takes more than one meeting up at the microphone to talk about that. So I would really fully vote for that kind of opposition to fast voting from now on. And the other is, I remember Rollins was along the water as a kid, and I know IHOP had said to me that they would love to entertain if anyone was interested, if there was a small little spot, if the people were interested without pushing on the owners and keeping it the same size and having something like that on their property, that they would entertain that as something. I don't mean entertain meant, entertain meaning that they would be interested and maybe looking into it with the owners, making sure that the owner really wants that. That's the feedback I've gotten from one owner, without quoting who it was. He said, "Jeffrey, I wish that the young ones would really ask me and not tell me what I would like and take their time with me, because I'm getting pushed by the kids a lot by accident." And he said it's too much for him.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Justin Anchowitz, 451 Eastern Ave., Ward Three. And I am somebody who works in construction, and I am very pro-development. However, I do feel like this is a little bit rushed for the decision, and I respectfully ask this council to table this decision for now, so that more discussions can be had with the community and its impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counselor Hogan.
At this moment, I'd like to make a motion to table this for more information.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counselor Otten.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey Abson.
Counselor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staubit.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer.
Yes. Motion to table. Next public hearing.
Petition of Chris Mitchum of DM Cannabis to open a marijuana retail business at 211-217 Lewis Street from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days per week.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Jim Smith. I'm an attorney with Smith, Gustalwin Crawford. With me is Jonathan Cipano, also an attorney with our firm. Five months ago, almost to the day, I presented to this group a proposal from DM on a cannabis location. We had a feisty hearing that evening, and we listened closely. There were some issues raised about parking in this particular location. Since that time, a number of things have happened. DM has had even more success in Oregon. They are a successful cannabis company, and I can assure you, I was told in our office today, we have 97 separate applications at the Cannabis Control Commission. We represent an awful lot of people in this industry, and we have learned one thing: a lack of capital is a significant problem. That is not a problem with DM. They're about to open their first store in Massachusetts, in Worcester, in the next few days. Having, I don't want to go through them again, because again, you, we have been in front of this body, but we heard the issue on parking. Now, I will say that the, where were the eighth and last license that, oh, special permit that this body granted, I will tell you that we probably now have as much or more parking than any of the other seven. The three on Western Avenue don't really have parking. It's a very busy street, but there's a lot of parking on the street. Oxford Street, obviously a downtown area. Boston Street, it's unclear because of the court case. I'm not quite sure how that'll turn out. In the, on the Lynn Way, there is parking, and we probably have about the same amount. On page nine of the brochure that we just handed out, we engaged a national engineering firm, Bowler. They have a big office in Boston. They have identified 11 spaces, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, behind our location. We have moved our location, this is critical, at rather significant expense. We moved our location in, down Lewis Street by about 50 feet. But the key to that new location is that behind that location, there is parking, significant and I think substantial parking, well in excess of any zoning requirement. And so out of respect for the neighbors who came that evening, who had that issue, that concern, DM has listened, and I think we've solved the issue. And as I say, in terms of the cannabis stores that will ultimately be in our city, I think we'll have as much parking or more than a great majority of them. We're also on the east side of the city. That's unusual, and I know it's been hard to get locations on the east side. We are in the heart of East Lynn on Lewis Street. So, Mr. President, I do hope that this will, this body will grant us a special permit this evening. I want to introduce Chris Mitchum, who is the owner and the CEO of DM, to explain a little bit more about DM and answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. Thanks for having me back. It's been about five months since I was last here. I appreciate your time. It's an honor to be here with you. Yeah, as Jim alluded to, we had some issues with our parking last time around, and we got to work right away after our last meeting, and we found a new spot. Took us a while, but, you know, we're proud of the results that we turned up, and our 11 parking spots, I think, is going to be a great fit for that area of town. I'm Chris Mitchum. I'm the owner of DM Cannabis. Also, as Jim alluded to, we've been blessed to have some success out in Oregon. I started this company with my dad and my best friend from high school. We're not wealthy people. We pulled ourselves up by our bootstraps and built this thing, and it's really exciting to be able to expand out to Massachusetts. We just opened, we're not quite open yet. We're days away from opening out in Worcester. We spent $800,000 on that building out in Worcester. And Lynn, we've been working to partner with the city of Lynn for over a year now, and, you know, we're really excited about the opportunity. We see everything that's happening in this city, and we want to be a part of it. You know, we've been operating for over three years now in the legal cannabis space. I come from a traditional business background, and, you know, for a lot of reasons, I love to jump into this industry. We have four facilities that we've built out in Oregon, both on the dispensary side and the cultivation side. I'm an OLCC committee member, the Oregon Liquor and Control Commission, which is Oregon's version of the Cannabis Control Commission. And so I sit on multiple committees with them. I actually helped develop the state seed-to-sale tracking software in Oregon called Metric. And luckily enough, Massachusetts decided to adopt this same software. So we have very deep experience with the cannabis industry. We know what we're doing. We're good operators. We can pull this thing off right, make sure we're not breaking any rules, and make sure there's no diversion, no marijuana going to kids. If you guys want a safe operator to do this right, we're a great choice for you. Mentioned capital, went over that. You know, we're planning to reinvest profits from Oregon out here to build this shop out, and, you know, we have the capital to pull this thing off. It's a very capital-intensive business, and unfortunately, it's hard for a lot of people to get in, and we're blessed to be in a position where we can. And, you know, we're committed. I know Lynn has had some issues, you know, with people getting off the ground, and I empathize with those people that are working hard to get off the ground, but I can assure you, I'm not going to be one of those people. If we get a host community agreement for Lynn, we're filing with the state that day, and we're going to open as fast as possible. We've got the experience to do it with the state. We've been working in-depth with the CCC for our facility in Worcester and our facility out in Orange, Massachusetts, where we're doing cultivation. So we're networked there. We've been through the process before. We know how to get through that process as quickly as possible. And I guess to close, I just want to say, if we're lucky enough to get this opportunity, you have my word, we won't let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Paul Coombs. I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I live on Parker Avenue. Excuse me. I wanted to mostly correct any misperception that the neighbors are greatly opposed to this facility. That is not true. I'm very active with my neighbors. In the past couple of months, I've been with 50 more people. One neighbor has voiced some concern, and that was mostly due to her own regrets of the passage of recreational marijuana laws. For the most part, people are either mildly supportive, or it doesn't really make a big difference to them. Personally, I'm very much in favor of it. I think it will bring new business into the neighborhood, and it will help us end the fact that our, oftentimes, we have four or five vacant storefronts in the neighborhood. And I know this one will probably be there for a long time, and with the increased traffic, maybe some other businesses could open up there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
So again, I'm in favor of this business coming into Lynn. I see a lot of good with it, but very much like the housing thing, I just have some things I just want to put in your ears. I mean, y'all known me for about six years now. Y'all know I don't play the race card at all. I hate it. I hate identity politics. Everything I've ever said is about economics, but today, unfortunately, I'm going to have to play. If you look at the history of marijuana, the reason why it was illegal, if we have to be very honest, was because in the '30s, they explicitly said that it would make white women want to have sex with black men, and the same with Mexicans. It was a racist law to begin with, and it incarcerated tons of black and brown people. Now, we learned our lesson. We passed the law. Great. But not to make you all feel uncomfortable here, every time a dispensary comes, right, or people who work in the dispensaries, I look at them, and no disrespect, and nobody should feel guilty about being white, and if anybody does make you feel like that, you should tell them no, right? Nobody should feel guilty about it. I'm not trying to make people feel guilty, because it's not your fault. But this is the situation we're in. We see these folks, nice dress suits, come from pretty decent backgrounds. Meanwhile, the people in our city who have been arrested for marijuana, which is a lot of people, are locked out of the business altogether. So as we approve these dispensaries, which I am 100% in favor of, please make no mistake about that, please think about some of your constituents who have been locked out of that. Maybe work with ROKA to see if you could get folks who are formerly incarcerated to get first dibs of jobs, something like that. And then another thing, just a concern, as we approve these dispensaries, you have to understand, a lot of young people made their money off of selling marijuana. They now see that it's become more accessible than ever. They themselves don't necessarily have job training or anything, and that's not an excuse to go sell something harder. But we could potentially be creating a situation in which we're removing something that is less harmful from their portfolio to them being pushed into something else because of the lack of jobs. So it's really important that as we approve these dispensaries, that we think about the people in our city. Our city's 64% minority, you know? A lot of people in the city have been locked up before. Please think about them and find a way to, if you have, if you make revenue from this, maybe earmark some of it for job training, specifically for folks who have been formerly incarcerated or not for marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, Hunter Richard. I live in the neighborhood, 27 Greystone Park. I'm not speaking for or against. I just have a question. This is an interesting location, or actually, I'm speaking in favor because of, I like business and I like to see the vacant storefront, you know, no longer vacant. However, this is a location that is in a residential area. It's a neighborhood corner, and I just wonder, with the council, and I posed the question, and maybe it's in the pamphlet that was handed out, the signage that will be displayed at this location. And I know in Colorado, the marijuana stores often have the neon sign with the marijuana, you know, on it, and I think that's just a question. The other location on the Lynn Way, you know, is more in a commercial district, but this is actually on a neighborhood corner. So I just posed the question to the company, sort of what will the frontage look like, the signage, the windows, and does that fall under the city's sign ordinance? Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to finish before we, before you answer that, okay? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name's Jaleen Lavingood. I live at 23 Breed Street. I'm sort of half and half. I'm glad the parking issue was addressed, and I do appreciate that. I know that one of the biggest oppositions, and they didn't have time to get organized, was from the church across the way, and I would ask that the signage and the storefrontage be respectful and not basically flaunted at that church, especially because the entrance will be at the back where the parking is. So the signage can be at the back where it's not going to be essentially a big insult to the church. And secondly, is there anything that will be done for the traffic right on that corner of Chestnut? Because my two issues were the parking, but also that that corner's traffic is notorious, and that's a narrow, choked spot that usually is bottlenecked already with traffic going through, cars parked, and there's often just one lane going through. Will anything be done to address that?
Okay, so after the hearing, we'll ask those questions, okay?
That was sort of halfway there and there.
Yep. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello. My name is Michael Murphy. I live at 42 Basset. I wanted to first say that I was glad that they recognized that the last meeting where this issue was tabled was feisty, because it was extremely feisty, and I look around the room right now, and there are not a lot of people here to speak either way. I think that you guys all got pamphlets tonight. There's not a whole lot of time for you to go and look over these and look at the finer details. So in the interest of the ward, in the interest of the constituents, I would ask that you table this and have a meeting with the ward to go over this information, so we can sort of understand what the plans are. There's a lot of talk about, after we have the vote, we can talk about, we can talk to DM about what's going on, but I feel like the neighbors and the neighborhood don't have a good idea of what's going on here. We haven't had a neighborhood meeting to discuss what's going on, and, I mean, in reality, if we could just have another month to sit down and talk about this, table it just a little bit longer, so maybe, maybe some minds can be changed on either side. So I respectfully ask that you table this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. As you know, I've spoken before on this topic. I still think the issue is parking. Even if you're going to get eight or 10 spaces behind that building, getting in and out of that little parking lot is going to be difficult, even dangerous. I mean, if you've been there, you'll see that it's dangerous. In addition to that issue, nobody on my street or Breed Street that I've spoken with was notified about tonight's meeting. I only found out about this meeting at 2:00, was able to reach one of my neighbors. The 10 others I've reached out to didn't hear about this, weren't informed, and, you know, this vote is happening without us really knowing about it. A third issue that I want to bring up, as Mr. Calucci knows, there's members of us on Atlantic Street and Breed Street who are circulating a petition to turn Breed Street and Atlantic Street into private parking. So there's no public parking on there, which influences this issue as well. We have enough problems between the various churches in the neighborhood, where, you know, our driveways are blocked, there's nowhere to park for people who don't have parking. The building next door to me, which was built in whatever, 1905, 1910, doesn't have any parking at all. So you've got 20, 30 cars just from that building that are circling around looking for spots already. The biggest issue here is parking, but also transparency, because no one knew about this meeting. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I hope that petition gets, work a little further with Mr. Calucci.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Samantha, Ward Four, also Breed Street. Again, we recommend and ask respectfully that you table this for another vote later. I'm concerned about signage on the street, not only for the, speaking on behalf of friends from the church, who, none of those folks are here to represent themselves. I'm concerned about parking, even though you say you have 11 spaces. We were told at a previous meeting that there were a number of spaces that were required for workers. That means there's very few spaces available for the patrons of this proposed establishment, and it's important that the residents of the area, particularly those of us with disabilities, have access to parking near our homes. The other concern I have is the signage, as it could impact the young people in our neighborhood, particularly since this is a route to schools and an after-school program. It would be It would be, I don't know if you're proposing a storefront that people can see into your, your unit, or whether the entrance will be from the rear. That information has been presented to the council, but has not been presented to the neighbors. So again, we support a motion to table this issue for now.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Alex Rice. I own and reside at 17 Breed Street. For those not familiar with the area, Breed Street runs directly into Lewis Street, where the subject property is. I'm about two or three buildings down from this property. I work from home, and my home office is on the third floor, so I get a prime view out of my window of this area, and I'll echo a lot of the concerns my fellow neighbors brought up. Firstly, I want to say that I fully support the legalization and commercialization of cannabis, and I appreciate the entrepreneurial spirit. They seem to have a great background on that, so my issues don't at all fall with any of that. You know, moving there, I've lived in other areas that are more congested, Somerville, Boston, Cambridge, and I was actually surprised at the traffic, both cars and pedestrians, and the parking that I found in that area. As my neighbors have said, where Chestnut meets Lewis, as well as where Breed and Atlantic meet Lewis, there's generally traffic, as well as people that kind of speed by, they go through that intersection, and they go very fast down those streets. When I moved in, I even told my girlfriend, like, when you're getting out of your car, be careful, because of how dangerous it can be, and, and I fear that this business, where I've seen these people, you know, will be adequately promoting the business and driving traffic, as they should, is going to increase those potential concerns in the neighborhood. The parking thing, for sure, I echo what was said. Separately, I fully support, regardless of whether this moves forward, doing some study in terms of making it residentially parking, some additional traffic control measures. Going back to the public safety, for people familiar with the area, there is on-street parking on Lewis, I believe it's 15-minute parking, but it's basically not safe due to the road width there, so people park on the side of the street, and then people walk across from the 7-Eleven there to some of the businesses. And looking out the window on a pretty regular basis, I see people crossing, people speeding, some close encounters. So it concerns me that this will exacerbate those issues. I guess my last concern I have is with the commitment to the community and the neighborhood and the involvement. I also sort of found out about this haphazardly. I'm probably one of the closest neighbors to it, from speaking to my other neighbors, some of whom are here tonight. I think people are open to it, but do have a lot of concerns, mostly related to the traffic and the parking. I also agree that, I don't know that most people know about it. And I would have welcomed the opportunity to have spoken with these developers. I know from experience on other development projects, it's typical that, I know this is more of a business, not a real estate development, that they would reach out to direct the butters, get community involvement. So I just, in spirit of being a good neighbor, right, that these people are coming in from out of state with their business, of how it's gonna affect the direct community around it, right? If there hasn't been any outreach up front, that makes me a little concerned of how that will go on an ongoing basis, if it does move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Valentin Madonaro, and I'm representing the Seven Day Adventist Church, which is across the street from this place. Four months ago, we were discussing about the corner, which is a little far from our church. Now, even is like 25 feet, because we have two entrances. We enter from Breed Street, and we enter from Lewis Street behind the 7-Eleven. And it's very dangerous, not only for the parking, if you know, for our kids. Our kids hang around in and out from the 7-Eleven, they go in and out from the parking, and it's very dangerous, this kind of business in this area. I'm sure councils, you're here because you represent the people. You are here to protect the people, the city of Lynn. I'm sure you wouldn't like, like, smoke marijuana in your backyard. Would you like breathe that in your backyard? I'm sure nobody would like to do that. So, 100%, represent the church. Unfortunately, there was not enough notice. This is why you don't see any more representation tonight, but we're really opposite on this business. They can open the business probably in another commercial place, but not in this residential place. I mean, even though today they legal the marijuana, but it's still, it's addicted drug. You know, the federal government spent millions and millions of dollars in the border to stop bringing the drugs here, but you know what the cartel said in Mexico? We will stop sending drugs when you stop consuming. So it's a time about thinking about our people, about our kids. Also, I run a recovering program right here on the city of Lynn. I see people suffering, how they suffer from recovering, from their health, from their addiction of, of all these drugs, including the marijuana. Thank you very much, and I hope so you table this, this petition tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Councilor President?
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, I've been working on this location probably since, I'm gonna say, May of last, of last year. Working with the Goldfish Pawn Association and other people in the area, when I was approached about opening up a cannabis store in that neighborhood, we have had neighborhood meetings there. I think everybody in the area has been aware of it, and, and I get some people on, you know, they have to work, they're not sure when all the meetings are, but they have done outreach to the, to the neighborhood. They've addressed all the concerns that everybody had at the last meeting in regards to, they have 11 parking spots behind the building. They are gonna be working with at least two organizations in the neighborhood contributing to them viable organizations that are constantly doing good in the neighborhood. There's, they took care of the problem with people living above them. They're not displacing anybody, they're taking a piece of property that they're gonna be investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in. They're gonna have more security in that neighborhood than any other business has ever brought there. They're a very reputable company, they've been in business for years. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Do you have a second? Second, any other discussion? Counselor Staubit.
Thank you. I, I just want to add that during the time that this has been going on, there, there was a neighborhood community meeting. This group then came, they've been vetted by EDIC, they then came before the Cannabis Site Plan Committee, where we voted in favor. We brought it up to set it down for a public hearing a few weeks back in, in public, and in the hearings, you know, scheduled for tonight. All of this has been done out in the open. For those that are concerned about signage, the city has strict signage requirements, so there will be no pot leaves or anything like that displayed on the building. If you drive by Apothca on the Linway, you'll see that there is nothing like that on their building. They do have a billboard that is actually located on another property that kind of looks like it's over their building, but it's not on their property. So there is strict signage. There was a concern about smell, there will be no smell, because there is no open cannabis in a dispensary, everything is sold sealed. I think that, that these folks have, have demonstrated that they're a professional organization, and I think that they will be a good addition to, to that area.
Mr. Vice President?
Is there any?
I'd also like to add to that, that they are gonna start out by doing appointment only, to see what happens, but also through this whole process, they've been nothing but open to the public, as Counselor Staubit has said, we've had numerous, numerous meetings. And the first time, when they notified everybody, they only have to go out 350 feet, they went more than a half a mile away to notify the neighborhood, and they, they got about 50 people who came to that first meeting. The last meeting that we had, the public hearing here in City Hall, the majority of people that were here were from the church. I respect their religious beliefs, I respect what they're saying, but this is a very reputable business, which is gonna create jobs in the neighborhood, which is also gonna financially help out other groups that are there in the neighborhood. This is why I'm on board with it.
Is there any other discussion? ROKA.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Counselor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Nope.
Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi Absin? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Public hearings to be set down.
We have the petition of Lynn Fireworks Fund for a carnival to be held at Keene Park, June 18th through June 21st, with setup on June 14th, 2020. Hours will be Thursday and Friday, 5:00 to 11:00, and Saturday and Sunday, 1:00 to 11:00 PM. We have the petition of Exponent Systems for permission to construct small wireless cell communications facility to be attached to an existing utility pole located on a public way at the following locations. 97 Adams Street, 91 Sheridan Street, 7 Pinkham Place, 70 A Rockaway Street, 231 Boston Street, 12 Chase Street, 57 Washington Street, 9 Bates Street, 57 Walnut Street, 30-32 Warren Street, 9 Curtis Street, 20 Morris Street, 2 Newcastle Street, 61 Newcastle Street, and 730 Summer Street. And that's it.
So I should, the council?
Done.
Motion to set down?
Seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor? Committee reports, utilities. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Budget committee, Counsel Lapierre.
Not tonight, Mr. President, as far as I can see. Ways and Means, maybe Counsel Net?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, it did say budget.
No problem.
Ways and Means. Counselor Net.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee voted unanimously for financial change for, and I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded, with the clerk Reed, the transfers, please.
We have the following transfers that laid over from the January 28th meeting. Transfer the sum of $412,000 from the account of reserve for a raised expense to the account of Lynn Police Payroll to fund Lynn Police Retro Pay raises effective 7/1/19 through 6/30/2020. Transfer the sum of $52,576.44 from the account of reserve to various departments to fund sick buybacks per the collective bargaining. Transfer the sum of $40,000 from the account of Lynn Police Payroll to the account of Lynn Police Expense to fund the medical claims for police officers hurt on duty. Also approved are the following certified funds. Ordered that the city comptroller be and is hereby authorized to take action and certify the following available funds. $200,000 to the City of Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development for the purpose of performing a transportation planning grant. $6,000 to the Office of the Mayor for the Downtown Lynn Cultural District for the Initiative on Market Street in Downtown Lynn, the Fair Sunday Grant. $150,000 to Lynn School Department for the FY20 Gateway City Grant for English Language Learning Programs. $75,000 to the Lynn School Department by the United Way via Elhand for the Project Rise SEMA Grant. $19,195 to the Lynn School Department for the FY20 Teacher Diversification Pilot Program Grant. And finally, the last item is approval of the contract for the internal auditor.
Motion has been made.
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion. ROKA.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi Absin? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. Before we go any further, I'd just like to congratulate Don Quijote, if you could please stand up so the council can see you. She has been appointed the new internal auditor. She's gonna be working with Mike. Licensing, Counselor Walsh. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
He can take it.
Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a unanimous vote by the committee. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public properties, Counselor Staubit.
Thank you, Mr. President. This'll be a little long. I'd like to start off by giving the report of the February 4th public property meeting last week. Motion made by Counselor Calucci and seconded by Counselor Walsh to award city-owned property at 21 Michigan Ave. to the Neighborhood Development Association, the amount of $80,000. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Motion made. Although, ah, ROKA, I'm sorry. I'd discussion. ROKA.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi Absin? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Next is ordered that the mayor be authorized to execute the alternative transportation corridor agreement by and between the MBTA and the City of Lynn for establishing a bike path, and the City of Lynn, and any other documents required by the Law Department to effectuate the aforementioned stated purpose. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded, discussion, ROKA.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi Absin? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Ordered that the City of Lynn abandon and convey a portion of Oak Street and authorize the mayor to be authorized to execute any and all documents, including but not limited to a release deed and/or documents of equivalent nature and disposition, and any other documents required by the Law Department to effectuate the above portion abandonment of Oak Street. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, ROKA.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi Absin? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Next, we have sale of property, lot in the corner of Myrtle Street and Wilford Street, for the amount of $130,000 to Tom McGovern of Linwood Development Corp. Majority vote of the committee, motion to approve, requires a ROKA vote.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion, ROKA.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Yes, present, sorry. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi Absin? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. What's that? So, just so that the council and the public knows, that Ways and Means transferred $450,195 in grant money for schools, police department, and DPW tonight.
Nice.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi Absin, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staubit?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sear?
Yes. That's it? So, just so that the council and the public knows that Ways and Means transferred four hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars in grant money for the schools, police department, and DPW tonight.
Nice.